Meeting of 2009. I'm Jack Weiss. I'm joined by Greg Smith and Dennis Zine. Mr. Smith and Mr. Zine, in terms of consent items. Item four, a Holland Beck grant. Item five, PD mental illness report. Item six, from a supplemental police count. Item seven, from supplemental police count. Those are consent items, if okay with you. Four, five, six, seven.
Yeah, that's fine. Fine for me.
All right. Okay, those items are approved. Item one, please, Mr. White.
Morning, John White, City Clerk. Police Department to present verbal report relative to the status of DNA testing backlog and cold hits and other DNA-related matters.
Morning, Commander. Good morning, Ms. Gibson.
Good morning.
Sir? Commander Pat Gannon, Detective Bureau, LAPD.
That's Sanchez Owens, LAPD.
David Liberto, Robbery/Homicide Division.
Anyway, good or Happy New Year. And just back from the holidays, don't have a lot to report. One of the things that we're very close to completing, entering everything into our database that we had, as you know, we itemized over 53,000 pieces of evidence when we looked through our freezer sections for, as we cataloged each of our rape kits. That process then went into a data collection, entry, data entry process, and then the verification of those, each of those cases through our department detective case tracking system to make sure that we have accounted for each of our, each of our cases. That should, that whole process should be completed by this Friday, I have been told. So by next Monday, we should have an absolute number on the number of rape kits that have not yet been analyzed. Of course, on those kits that we were provided with funding to outsource is going nicely. We've run into a little bit of a problem with some of our vendors being able to take the number of cases that we want them to take, but we were told at the beginning of the year now they'll be able to be completely up to, up to speed. But nonetheless, we have done well at sending old cases, old rape kits out for, for analysis. We're happy with that. As far as the hiring process goes, 16 positions were allotted to us. 10 of those positions were criminalists, and those are the most critical of the, of the positions that were provided to us. We have, we made 10 selections for, for criminalists. We were just notified by, and we're hoping to have, we were hoping to have all 10 of those hired in January. We were notified by Personnel Division that two of those criminalists had failed their background. So we'll have eight hired in, in January, and we'll have to go back to the well for two additional. And that's all the update that I have for this month.
Ms. Sanchez Owens.
Good morning. I'm really happy to report that we have made some significant progress over the last year. Just to give you an example, last year about this time, we had 7,299 kits in our backlog. This year, we are down to 6,669. Just this last week alone, we were able to knock out 85 cases. So we're starting to really gear up and take advantage of all the influx of money, both the general fund and Mr. Weiss's generous grant, and the donations that we've gotten and our grants. So we're, we're very pleased with the progress we're starting to make with all of that. So given that, I'll tell you what our current backlog consists of at this time. We have 193 cases, rape kits that were requested for analysis this week that were not completed yet. We had 256 other kits requested for analysis that are in the pipeline. And the rest, 6,220, are kits in property that have not yet been requested for testing. And that totals 6,669 cases. This last year, 2008, we had a total of 642 rape kits assigned for analysis. I think that's the largest number we have ever had at SID. So we're real proud of that. All the, the new bodies that we're getting are starting to, to kick in, and we're seeing some progress. Total hits in case-to-offender notifications for 2008 were 249. That's my report for this week. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
As far as Robbery/Homicide Division is concerned, our year-end totals is, we had 264 CODIS hits, which compares to 320 last year for a 17.5 percent decrease. Homicide hits, we had 33 compared to 37 last year for an 11 percent decrease. Sexual assault hits, we had 146 compared to 162 last year, which is a 10 percent decrease. And 85 other hits, which are mostly burglaries and robberies, compared to 121 the previous year for a 30 percent decrease. Of all the 264 total hits, RHD personnel are handling 93 or 35 percent of them.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for all the hard work that you're all putting in. Colleagues, you have any questions as the year begins on the DNA issue?
Just a couple on the DNA. When we compare LAPD to the sheriffs and other large agencies, do they have similar backlogs in the DNA?
It's hard to compare us to the sheriffs because they don't quite operate the same way we do. Their kits are collected at the municipalities that they serve. They've never really had a true handle on what's out there. I understand that recently, they asked those agencies to give them account, and they think they have somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000 cases. So they are a little bit less than us, but they're not sure that's accurate either.
But nevertheless, they have a backlog.
They do.
And then the other issue with the farming out to the private vendors, since the emphasis goes from different jurisdictions for the analysis, more emphasis on that. Do we find those vendors now being overwhelmed with requests from entities to do analysis since the crime stats show that there's reduction in crime, yet there appears to be a backlog? And as the political emphasis says, "We need to do something about this DNA," is then forced upon those private vendors, and then they're getting overloaded so that trail keeps on backing up?
To a certain extent, yes, that's true. They gear up and gear down as their requests come in. I think you can probably recall a few years back, New York did a big push at getting their backlog reduced. A lot of those vendors geared up for that and were satisfying that need. And then they downsized because they weren't getting the requests. Now they're gearing up again because they are getting requests. There's a national push to get through all these backlog cases all over the country. So the, a lot of the vendors are trying to step it up to meet that need.
That was one of the issues that was also discussed with Yvette and her staff before, that Selmark and other companies that we, Bodie, that, that we contract with, if they know that this type of work is going to be ongoing for a long period of time, then they will hire sufficient numbers of people in order to, to compensate for that. As if, as a sheriff's department and other entities begin to rely more and more on sending, sending their DNA issues out for analysis. And I think that's where everybody is going. So each of the contract companies are now hiring, as Yvette says, are hiring more people in order to be able to accommodate that.
And then my next question, I'm pleased to hear that a couple of people failed the background to know that we do have those extensive backgrounds to make sure that they're qualified. In the private sector, are there background checks? Is there some kind of verification for the folks? For example, they get turned down here, and they go to a private vendor, and they get a job over there. Do they have some kind of a certification to make sure that the people know what they're doing so it doesn't end up creating a problem down the road in court?
Yes, before we allow a contractor to become one of the LA city contractors, they do have to meet what is known as ASCLAD lab accreditation standards. So they do meet the same standards that our own lab meets, as far as getting those cases done properly, and that the information that comes out of the results is certifiable in a court of law.
So there's no compromise on that? Okay. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for the report, and thank you, more importantly, for just the continued effort and focus on this issue. We all appreciate it. Talk to you soon. Mr. White?
Item two. Sealed to report relative to mass notification systems available to the City of Los Angeles.
Good morning, Ms. Gibson.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thanks for, for all the work you've been putting in on this mass notification issue. We know you've been working very hard on it and, and, and on a very tight schedule. And so have at it.
I just wanted to provide the committee a very brief status report of our efforts so far. ITA has prepared a draft RFP which should be released within the next couple of weeks. The goal is to have the process completed with a recommendation to the Committee for Contract Award by the end of March. As the committee is aware, there currently is no funding for the project, and for that reason, the RFP does state that the contract award is subject to and contingent upon Council and Mayor approving a budgetary appropriation for the project. We're also continuing discussions with Water and Power for its participation in this mass notification system. We think that would be beneficial in terms of cost sharing and also realizing economies of scale. The third important element is that we're exploring the cost of purchasing a 911 database that would be used for emergency notifications. These databases provide listed and unlisted landline phone numbers, and for that reason, if the program is implemented, it will be necessary for the city to establish a subscription service for the public so that the public would be able to provide to us information regarding other means of notification, such as cell phones, emails, as well as fax numbers.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Questions for June, everybody?
Yeah, two questions. Have you got any idea what the cost factors are in Orange County where they're doing this? I don't know if it's municipalities down there or the county that's doing it.
The county executed a contract for emergency notification only. Currently, they're, they have a flat rate system with the estimate that the notifications were going to go out to 1.2 million residents. The contract also provides the opportunity for the municipalities within the county to also execute their own contracts for both emergency and non-emerg, excuse me, for both emergency and non-emergency purposes. My understanding is that many of the municipalities have, up to this point, not followed up on that option because there is a significant cost associated with that.
Do we have any idea what those kind of coming? We started significant for Seal Beach, maybe $100,000 significant, but for Los Angeles, it would mean nothing, so.
For this particular vendor, there is a cost per household. So for example, it's-
So it's scalable?
Well, you know, it's, it's a dollar per household, you know, based on this particular contract for non-emergency purposes. And we think that that's why it's important for us to go out to an RFP, because there are different pricing models that are available by various vendors.
Okay, good. And have, have we found any cities that are doing subscription-based systems?
What's interesting, based on our survey of other public agencies, is that most agencies that do have a contract for mass notification systems, it is for emergency only. New York has a subscription service that they have actually had for quite some time, but the reason it works for them is because they have their own internal communication system. So there really is no additional cost.
No.
What we are pursuing is a web-hosted system wherein the service would be contracted out.
Yeah.
So there is going to be a cost associated with that.
I look forward to seeing all that. That sounds interesting.
An idea that I just thought about, the news agencies, you can sign up with the news agencies, breaking news, while we're waiting for funding, which I don't know where it's going to come from. Have we looked into linking up on notification process through the media, where they can access your pagers and other computers?
We have not looked into that. If there is specific information that you or your staff are aware of, we're certainly happy to discuss that with you.
It's broadcast, you watch the news, and they say you sign up for it, and they'll give you whatever breaking news you want. And in the short term, until we get our own system, maybe we could piggyback on emergency notifications, something along those lines. I'll give you some information on it, but the, the television networks in particular have it, is if something's happening, they will messenger it out to the broad base of people who sign up for it. There's no cost to the subscriber. And in the short term, it might be something that we could utilize. I know we want to have our own system, and it's advantageous to do that. But in the short term, maybe it's something we could look into, if a cooperative effort could be made with them, since they've already got the system online.
We're happy to follow up with you on that.
Appreciate your, your work on this, Ms. Gibson. It's really, it's a very important RFP, and we're glad to hear it's going to be out so quickly. Thank you. Mr. White?
Item three. Board of Police Commissioners report relative-
Oh, I apologize, Mr. White. We had a public comment card from Angela Kaufman from the Department of Disability. Ms. Kaufman, I apologize. Before we close the item on item two, would you like to speak on item two?
No.
Okay. I, I do apologize. I had it right here. My bad. Okay, Mr. White?
Item three. Board of Police Commissioners report relative to the Police Department's process and protocol for reporting and documenting hate crimes.
Okay, we're here on a motion that several council members put in, and we're going to hear from the department first, but also we have Robin Toma, Leba Geft, and Matthew Friedman from the County Human Relations Commission, the Weisenthal Center, and the Anti-Defamation League. If the three of you could also come up so that you're at the table during the report, that would be great. And we just, we just need to pull another chair up there for you. So first, we'll hear from the department, and then we'll hear from the organizations. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Captain Ann Young, Commanding Officer of Detective Support and Vice Division, which Hate Crimes is one of the sections that I have. This is Lieutenant Yana Horvitz, who's the new OIC of that particular section.
Thank you.
We submitted a report to the Police Commission a few weeks ago, and we are happy to report that the department has instituted a standardized protocol that is department-wide, where all the officers, all the divisions actually use the same protocol to report hate crimes. We have currently 19, soon to be 21, divisional established hate crime coordinators that will be at each division. And their role is to review all the reports that will come in on a daily basis and to make sure that the particular follow-ups have been completed. They go out in the field, and they do additional follow-ups if necessary. Our unit, the Hate Crimes Unit, we review all of the reports for the entire city and make sure everything has been done correctly and it is standardized. We review the elements of the crime. We ensure the follow-ups have been completed and, and also conduct any follow-ups that are also necessary. In this, in January of 2008, POST, the Commission on Peace Officers Standards and Training, also proposed guidelines for the law enforcement for the state of California. So everyone is going to be on the same page as far as reporting of hate crimes. In this particular report, the concern was what type of community outreach our departments, divisions are doing in the area of hate crimes. Hopefully, in February of this year, we've partnered with Hollywood Division, where they're actually going to staff a community outreach center for the, to assist the gay and lesbian community who have been fearful over the last several years as far as reporting, making reports, fearful of going to police stations or even calling the police out to their scene. So in February of this year, hopefully, we'll have a drop-in center, outreach center in Hollywood, which will be really outstanding. We can really get a, a sense of the, the crimes that sometimes go unreported, and they'll actually be able to come in and make those reports. West Valley Division Captain Steve Zipperman has really taken a, a lead, a role in, in his community as far as hate crimes. He's established a committee, committee called HEAT, Hate Education and Tolerance Committee, where he has the Clergy Council, LA Unified School District, the Mayor's Office, ADL, and they meet, and they also have a juvenile CPAB component. And they actually talk about hate crimes. They stay on top of the hate crimes that are occurring in the Valley area, especially West Valley. And we haven't seen in some of the other areas where commanding officer has actually gone out and actually really put something together that's been really organized. My unit will be traveling to Santa Barbara hopefully in a couple of weeks. They have a program out there with the Museum of Tolerance where they actually identify gang members, and they actually go through that particular Museum of Tolerance. And apparently, it's very moving. The gang individuals, the children, they leave that presentation in tears, basically, after what they've seen as far as the, the hate. There've been several town hall meetings across the city, you know, when different crimes spike up. But we need to see probably a little more community intervention, and that's what we're going to be working on in this year to try and get some of our areas a little more involved.
Thank you. Lieutenant, anything that you want to add in the report?
I would just like to reiterate that, as, as Captain Young had mentioned, that DSVD and the Hate Crimes Unit really is inserting itself in the community, at the community level. I've attended several community police academies, community forums, so we're always there trying to do our outreach and insert where we can.
Thank you. We have representatives from the County Human Relations Commission, the Weisenthal Center, and the Anti-Defamation League from left to right. Mr. Toma, why don't we ask you to begin?
Thank you, council member, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. Just to start out, our work in terms of hate crimes at the county encompasses three areas. One is that we do an annual hate crime report, and I'm happy to say that LA City and LAPD are one of the leaders in terms of really having a strong protocol and a consistent reporting of hate crimes out of the 88 cities and 46 law enforcement agencies that report to us each year. And we continue to have a great relationship with LAPD in that regard. Also, we have a zero-hour schools initiative where we focus on schools that have experienced large-scale racial outbreaks, and we develop human relations models at five targeted schools. And in two of those schools, Taft, Grant, and San Fernando Valley High Schools in LAUSD, we work not only with LAUSD but also with LAPD. And then third, we also have a focus on racialized gang violence prevention, because we know through our reports that gang involvement in hate crime is a serious and continuing matter. I want to commend LAPD on their report and their, and their different efforts to try to improve their hate crime work in particular. The issue of transgender hate crime and the outreach they're doing there is very important because our reports show consistently that transgender violence, anti-transgender hate crime violence tends to be the most violent of any hate crime. It doesn't happen, doesn't get reported a lot, but what gets reported is almost always of violent nature. I wanted to make four points with regard to what we're talking about here today in the protocols. And one of them was, the first was to say, in terms of training, that we know that the academy does a good job at, of introducing and educating officers about hate crime policies and protocols. And I think that there's sometimes there are opportunities for in-service training, but I think that that's an area where I think can always be strengthened, to make sure that officers that are in the field, have been out of the academy for many years, do get an opportunity to, to be reminded about what they need to ask to ensure that a hate crime hasn't been committed, or if it has been committed, how to, how to get the evidence necessary to determine what kind of hate crime it is and to prosecute it effectively. Number two, I think that it's also something we see is that hate crimes that occur in jails and in juvenile facilities, in schools, oftentimes, the nature of it make it more challenging to investigate. And I think sometimes we, there needs to be a special emphasis on how to go about investigating those effectively. For example, many of the major campus brawls that are racially divided at schools, we almost never get reports of any hate crimes coming out of those, even though we know through television reports and student reports that there's definitely violence occurring among students, not necessarily for prosecutors, as much as for being able to really document what's happening and be able to address those issues in an effective way at those schools. So I think that training, including into the training, protocols around how officers can respond more effectively to large-scale and institutional hate violence would be important to consider. Number three, I think that it would be useful to clarify which cases get referred to the FBI, LA Sheriff's Department, LAPD task force on hate crimes. I know that was set up a few years back, and it might be helpful to understand which, what is the criteria that is applied to determine which of those cases get referred to that, that task force. And also, number four, as I mentioned, gangs and hate crimes, not throughout LA, but certain parts of LA, such as Harbor Gateway, has been a clear connection. And what we're interested in is to figure out how there might be greater internal coordination and collaboration between the gang officers on one hand, and, and those that investigate hate crime or the Detective Support Division. So I know that we have an upcoming focus on the Pacoima area in the county, and that's also intersects with LAPD in the city. So I, I think that that might be an opportunity for us to perhaps pilot a way for us to, together, combine a focus on gangs which have, that are behind and involved in hate violence, because we know where that occurs, we can count on that being violent and consistent, and needs to have a coordinated approach in assuring that, that kind of activity is contained and, and reverted and prevented in the future. So those are my remarks.
Thank you very much. Robin? Ms. Geft?
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to participate here today on behalf of the Simon Weisenthal Center and the Museum of Tolerance. And my comments focus on the important public-private relationship, the partnership that supports our law enforcement professionals and helps promote building trust between police and community, especially in the area of hate crimes. I'll briefly address three points, and the first is picking up on something that Robin Toma addressed as his first point of reference, and that is training and resources specifically in connection with hate crimes. The Museum of Tolerance is the official provider in Southern California of the course Hate Crimes for First Responders. That was developed by POST, that was referenced earlier. It was developed with the input from the Museum of Tolerance and the Napa Valley Criminal Justice Center, which offers the same training for law enforcement in Northern California. The course was designed for first responders to hate crimes so that they know what questions to ask, what evidence to look for, and how to regather that evidence without which prosecutors find it very difficult to make their case. The program meets the new requirement of Penal Code Section 13519.6. It expands legal knowledge of hate crimes, provides first responders with the scope of hate crime dynamics, prepares first responders for initial investigation and documentation, exposes officers to the importance of their role in addressing hate crimes, and helps officers understand the typology of perpetrators. It is an eight-hour course. It's open to all sworn personnel. The program is certified by POST. Tuition is sponsored under a grant from the Museum of Tolerance, and if travel is involved, that is covered by POST Plan IV. The Weisenthal Center Task Force Against Hate Crimes Senior Researcher Rick Eaton presents a special workshop at this program. Several LAPD officers are actually on our faculty delivering that course. The MOT is additionally using this opportunity to introduce and distribute another one of POST's resources, and that is a video program guide for victims of violence. It's intended to educate victims about the investigative and criminal justice processes so that they are better able to understand and assist in the investigation and prosecution of the offenders. This Hate Crimes Course for First Responders is required by POST, but it has no mandate. And so subscription by agencies is not as robust as POST had hoped to see it. LAPD has sent some of its offices to the program. The second point is additional LAPD MOT training initiatives. This is not only with the Los Angeles Police Department but other county and statewide agencies, but specifically for LAPD, the powerful nexus between the content of the museum and the topic of hate crimes is very effectively explored in the LAPD Academy Recruits Training Program. Academy instructors cover the requirements for hate crimes during the course of the Tools for Tolerance Diversity Training at the Museum of Tolerance, and that has found to be very effective. The LAPD Citizens Academies, we are often asked by the LAPD to present at these, and we are always very happy to do so. The museum hosts federally-funded national institutes against hate crimes and terrorism. Of course, our local agencies also participate, but among the many courses that we offer- The museum hosts federally-funded national institutes against hate crimes and terrorism. Of course, our local agencies also participate, but among the many courses that we offer, the law enforcement programs for building trust for community are focused on one in particular, beyond diversity, using integrity to build community trust. And this builds up the individual, leveraging the integrity that is already present in every law enforcement officer, and it includes anti-bias education, communication, skills building, and leadership development. And thirdly, going beyond law enforcement. The LAPD report made reference to the Museum of Tolerance's Intervention Program for juvenile and young adult gang members. The museum invests heavily in our youth and offers an array of acclaimed, age-appropriate, experiential programs for hate crimes prevention, intervention, and remediation. We do this in conjunction with schools and youth-serving organizations, with law enforcement, probation, the DA's office, LA Superior Court, the Human Relations Commission, various other community and faith-based groups throughout the city. History has shown us time and again that when economies falter, hate and intolerance flourishes. This critical time, we stand ready to redouble our efforts and strengthen our invaluable partnerships with law enforcement, with public officials, with community leaders, to meet the daunting challenges that face us, and at the same time, find opportunities for positive action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Geft. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you. Distinguished members of the Public Safety Committee, my name is Matthew Friedman, and I'm an associate director of the Pacific Southwest Regional Office of the Anti-Defamation League. ADL, as you probably know, is a ninety-five-year-old Jewish civil rights organization dedicated to eradicating antisemitism and bigotry of all kinds. ADL wrote the model hate crimes legislation on which laws in forty-six states and federal hate crime laws are based. We are also known to law enforcement as a close ally in the investigation of hate crimes, extremist and terrorist threats, and a provider of expert training throughout the world. I want to begin again by thanking you for taking time to discuss this important issue today. ADL appreciates your consistent leadership on the difficult task of combating hate crimes and incidents in Los Angeles. And we also want to thank LAPD for acknowledging our longtime partnership in its report. We look forward to our continued collaboration. Although complete statistics for 2008 are not yet available, there were several disturbing hate crimes in Los Angeles targeting the Jewish community this past year, including graphic antisemitic graffiti in Tarzan and Encino, an attempted firebombing of the Milken Jewish Community Campus in West Hills, and a vicious assault on an Orthodox Jew in North Hollywood. A critical component to a hate crime response is that leaders in the community quickly and clearly denounce the crime and send the following message to everyone with that targeted characteristic, which is, "You are safe. You are welcome." And we applaud the city council, particularly members Weiss, Zine, and Grul, and LAPD for doing just that in each of these instances. We know that hate crimes too frequently go unreported. Therefore, it's more important than ever that our policymakers and civic leaders understand hate crimes laws and work with law enforcement to ensure that our police and law enforcement officers are well-trained to respond to and report them sensitively and effectively. To ensure that our local law enforcement are as prepared as possible, the ADL encourages LAPD officers to seek out and complete ADL Post-certified hate crimes training. We are submitting information on the programs offered by ADL on hate crimes for law enforcement to the committee. And in addition, our upcoming domestic terrorism conference that we are hosting with LAPD, FBI, and ATF will be taking place this year at the Skirball Cultural Center in March. My colleague Ariella Lowenstein and I will also be available for questions following this meeting. Thank you again for your commitment to this issue.
Thanks to the three representatives and three organizations for not just coming but for what they do, I wanted to ask the police department if you have any comments you want to make in light of the statements that the organizations made.
We appreciate those comments, and this year, as we start off the year, we see that we do have a lot of work to do as far as finding out the training that's being offered for in-service at the academy. I'd like to personally do more work with the Museum of Tolerance as far as the young people in the community. So, those, we've already actually tentatively scheduled some meetings before this meeting actually started. So, we're looking forward to addressing all of these concerns and hopefully coming back in a couple of months with an update as to where we are.
Appreciate that. Colleagues, you have any questions or comments?
The instance you described, the Jewish Community Center and the Tarzan and Encino incidents that took place, we issued some significant rewards on those crimes. Was there any activity, follow-up, that you became aware of, suspects or information about suspects? And would you be in the pipeline for that when the investigation takes place?
We would definitely be in the pipeline for those, and to my knowledge, there's been no arrests made in any of those cases unless the lieutenant knows, but she says no.
Because at the Jewish Community Center, there was a videotape of a suspect, and they did release that to the media. ATF gave money, we gave money, there was almost, I think, close to $100,000, if I'm not mistaken, reward money on that particular situation with the videotape. Was that investigated by your section or was investigated by another section?
By another section. Was that West Valley?
West Valley?
Yes.
But it was a hate crime?
Yes, it was a hate crime, yes.
So, West Valley, any information they would discover would be relayed to your section?
Well, West Valley would actually do the investigation. They would give us the information, but the detectives from West Valley would actually be the ones to go out and conduct that follow-up, and they would forward it to us.
Now, to complicate matters, it's now Topanga because the division's been split as of yesterday. So, those cases would then go from West Valley to Topanga, the news station?
Correct.
Okay. As we should follow up and see, because there was some very serious hate crimes that took place in the residential area and then at the Jewish Community Center. And we thought that the reward money would generate some interest and hopefully some suspects. But I hadn't heard anything about any follow-up as far as bringing someone forward through the criminal justice system.
We'll get that information for you and get it to you.
I think we need to keep the other organizations involved and apprised of that because these crimes are occurring. I know recently, there were some in Orange County that I heard on the, read in the paper. So, they haven't gone away, and there's LA, Orange County, and who else knows whatever. And do you folks maintain liaison with other law enforcement agencies in this particular arena of hate crimes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Taylor, you mentioned that you weren't satisfied with the level of reporting of on-campus related hate crimes, that's LAUSD or just county-wide?
I would say it's a problem county-wide. There's eighty-six school districts in LA County, but there were a large number of incidents or brawls that occurred on LAUSD campuses. And I know that LAUSD has its own police force, so they often rely on them, although they're a very limited force for the size of the district. So, I know that sometimes they call on LAPD as well.
Actually, their crime reports are registered with LAPD stations, so their officers take reports and file them with LAPD. But I was concerned because I know our Human Relations Commission has a strike team that goes out on all those instances, on campus crimes related to hate and/or race. And they have an email notification system, which I get, I know all councilmembers get, of all such incidents throughout the city, whether or not in our district or not, I get notifications. So, are you on their email notification system?
I don't believe we are.
Okay. You ought to contact our Human Relations Commission because they have staff of people go right out immediately to campuses.
Right.
And they send us a form that says this is hate-related or gang-related, and you guys get, you ought to get on that system then.
Right. And we do work with your Human Relations Commission quite a bit, especially at schools and responding to schools. A lot of the work that, though, happens right after tends to be around the issue of, of course, bringing some calm back to the campus, helping understand what caused in the first place and to remedy those things. The reporting of the hate crimes is sort of a, not something that is in the core part of that response. And usually, we find, you know, later, what has or has not been reported from that campus activity. And sometimes, truthfully, it's hard to figure out because you've got hundreds of students running around, you know, throwing trash cans or striking each other, and it's very hard to get the kind of evidence you need in the police report. But that, it is kind of odd to have dozens of those or many of those and not have, you know, more than a handful of reports come out of that.
Get on that system. It's very informative.
Thank you.
Well, look, I appreciate that you all came here for the presentation this morning, and I appreciate that as a result of you all being here, that even more connections between your organizations and the police department have been made. I do think it's clear, and I know my colleagues agree with me, that the police department not only is top-rate in terms of dealing with these issues, but is absolutely top-rate in terms of dealing with the organizations that we have in Los Angeles that specialize in this area, and we all appreciate that. We appreciate that it's something that the chief and the command staff and that yourselves are so dedicated to and that you take it as seriously as you do, and that I think, as Mr. Toma said, you're, you know, we have eighty-eight cities in, eighty-seven, eighty-eight?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight cities and it's counting. And it's a great progressive, you know, forward-thinking county, but you are the number-one department in the county in terms of understanding these issues and grappling with them, and we really appreciate that. And we're very fortunate to have such a great department and to have such great specialists in this area. So, we look forward to the work you continue to do together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. White, that's our agenda, right?
It is.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Now, is it six forty-five yesterday, the first thorough call at the station, and usually the first order for everybody was to get out of the facility and walk.